In a second. And all those in favor, John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I'll see you everybody in a couple of minutes.
Recording in progress.
Okay, good evening, everybody. We are back in open session on our Select Board meeting of Thursday, I'm sorry, of Tuesday, November 9th. And we will start with our Pledge of Allegiance led by Tom tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Um, we can start with open forum tonight. First, I would like to start with, on behalf of the board, I'd like to congratulate Representative Arciero. Representative Arciero was awarded the Massachusetts Water Works Association Legislature of the Year. Both the Chelmsford and the Westford Water District, Water Department nominated him and was supported by the Littleton Electric Light and Water Department. He was awarded this recognition for his assistance with many legislative issues affecting the public water supplies, including his assistance with the Sustainable Water Management Initiative and the Water Management Act process. And in addition, Representative Arciero was instrumental in helping Littleton get approval for its new water treatment facility. And, you know, this is just one of the many ways that Representative Arciero supports our communities, helps our communities whom he represents throughout the district. And water resources, as I said, just one of his many areas of expertise. So Representative Arciero, congratulations and keep up the good work. And then the other thing that I have for open forum is that I just want to remind everybody that the town will be holding its Veterans Day Ceremony on Thursday, November 11th, on the Town Common. And beginning, I believe, at about, I think 10:30 is when folks, is that right? Is 10:30 is when folks will be gathering? And so we invite everyone to turn out in support to honor all of our veterans. Tom?
It's 10:30 at the JV Fletcher Library parking lot, and we'll proceed over, and then the ceremony will start on the Common at 11:00. Look forward to seeing everybody.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything for open forum? Okay. Seeing none. Let's go to our 7:10 PM item, which is a request to authorize the tree warden to issue a permit for the removal of two public shade trees located at 6 Hildreth Street as required by General Law, Chapter 87, Section 4, cutting down or removing public shade trees. So, I believe this is a public hearing, so I need a motion to open the public hearing.
No movement.
In a second.
Second.
Okay, and all those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Hi, Steve.
Hi, how you doing?
Good.
Thank you very much. So this agenda item to issue a permit for removal of two public shade trees at 6 Hildreth Street was actually continued from your October 12th meeting. Per Mass General Law, whenever we receive an objection to a public shade tree hearing, the ultimate authority to issue the permit comes from the Select Board. So originally, this request was brought to you because there was an objection to this hearing originally being posted as a joint hearing for a scenic road application. The objection was to the fact that it was a joint hearing and that it should have gone through Mass General Law, Chapter 87, Public Shade Tree Hearing Requirements. So following discussion about that objection at your October 12th meeting, you voted to continue this item and requested that I, as tree warden, conduct a public shade tree hearing in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 87, Section 3. So in accordance with those, with Section 3, we conducted a, we posted a public hearing notice on October 14th at the Town Hall and the Highway Garage. We posted that notice upon the two trees at 6 Hildreth Street on October 15th. A public hearing notice was published in the Eagle Independent on October 22nd and October 29th. And we conducted the public shade tree hearing yesterday, Monday, November 8th, at 10:00 AM. Prior to that hearing, we did receive yet another objection in writing to the removal of the two trees from Mr. Jeffries at 11 Boston Road. He objected to the fact that he felt that the 16-inch Norway maple that we're requesting to remove is not, in his opinion, dead or dying and could be salvaged. In addition to that, he felt that the 20-inch Norway maple was misidentified and is a sugar maple. And once again, he felt that with professional assistance, that tree could be salvaged as well. He also indicated that he was concerned that a tree had been planted in the public way ahead of approval for the removal of these two trees, which was done by the homeowner. It is a 2-inch red maple. Did not receive permission to plant the tree, but it has been planted at this point in time. So as I said, we conducted the public shade tree hearing on Monday. Mr. Jeffries did attend, once again reiterated his objections, but also indicated that, you know, his opinion is that we should be focusing more on the care and maintenance of trees as opposed to removal. We did have some additional attendees to the meeting, including the Town Manager, as well as Joanna Donahue from Hildreth Street. Didn't have any objections necessarily to the removal of trees, but did ask if they could be replaced with other maple trees, as well as asked if the recommendations from our arborists, that the trees be requested with zelkovas be reviewed by the tree ward. So we've done that. You know, it's still my opinion, you know, based on the condition of the trees and the evaluation that we received from our arborists, that we consider these trees for removal and replace them with two trees that'll thrive in these locations.
And Steve, I know you mentioned that we did have an arborist look at the trees, but could you just tell us what the arborist said about the two trees?
Yep, so the arborist noted that the trees are in a state of decay. You know, there is some serious deterioration of the canopy and the root structure. You know, due to the wall behind the trees, as well as the road itself, there is limited root zone for those trees to thrive. So, you know, the arborist did feel that, did recommend removal of those trees just due to the fact that they are a threat to the public way and didn't feel that they could be salvaged at this point.
Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, I don't see any, but Bob Jeffries has his hand up, so if we could unmute Bob. Bob, are you there? I see your hand, I see, I see your name, are you there?
I'm here, can you hear me? Yeah, first I'd
Yeah, first, I'd like to commend the tree warden because he basically responded to everything that I objected to. And so he did get in contact with an arborist, they have their opinion. I don't happen to agree with the opinions, but I'm not an arborist, so what, you know. The one thing I disagree with is that there isn't enough area there for the root zone. There's actually quite a bit of room there compared especially to anywhere else along the scenic road. That's a problem all the way along. If it's a problem there, it's a problem with the existing chestnut that's there. It's also a problem all the way along the road because there's a lot of trees that grow between the road and the wall. And I estimated that the sugar maple was 110 years old while the road and the wall were there for 110 years, and somehow that tree got through. And we know, I know how that tree got in the condition it's in. It was in the ice storm and it took the crown down, and it's been rotting ever since. But given the fact that the tree warden did everything exactly the way you're supposed to, that's what I was really objecting to. And he met all the requirements, and if we continue to work this way, I'm perfectly happy.
Great, thank you, appreciate it. All right, I do not see any other comments, so I believe that it now rests with us to approve the taking down of these two trees. So, and then I know there is the second issue about the planting of the tree in the right of way, but let's, let's set that apart at least right now from the taking down of, or the removing of the two trees. So is there a motion from the board? Oh, Scott, go ahead.
Having that opinion from the arborist, to me, is the gold standard, I guess, if you will, for an opinion. So I make a motion to approve the tree warden's request to professionally remove these two trees, Norway maple and the sugar maple, in question.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, with that, all those in favor, Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. And then we have the other issue of the tree that has been planted. Is it in the right of way, Steve?
Yes, it is in the right of way.
Okay, so it's been planted in the right of way, I guess, and without our permission. And so what, if anything, do we want to do about that?
I guess my question, maybe it was in the arborist report, I missed it, but, you know, would that tree be considered a natural tree to replace one of these anyway? Or is it going to be the same problem down the road 20 years we've got this root bound?
So we did not at the time ask, you know, we were unaware that the tree had been planted, obviously, so we did not ask the arborist to evaluate that tree specifically. They did make recommendations for trees to be planted in the public way. You know, their recommendation was a Japanese zelkova, which, you know, is, once again, is a non-native tree. You know, it is good for tight planting areas, it is identified as a resilient tree in DCR's, you know, Mass Urban and Community Forestry Program Guide. However, you know, zelkova's aren't necessarily, you know, consistent with what's been planted on that tree or really in character with sort of the scenic road. Red maples are, you know, they can thrive in particularly poorly draining soils. They do have a larger canopy than the zelkova's, but, you know, as far as maples go, I think would probably be a suitable replacement for those two trees that we are removing. You know, they, they are a little bit smaller than something like a silver maple, but their roots are a little bit less intrusive as far as, you know, impacts to roads and sidewalks and walk, and, you know, retaining walls. So personally, my recommendation would be to consider a maple tree and a red maple would be, would be a recommendation that I would give. You know, we could ask the arborist to review that and see if they, if they agree with that recommendation.
Okay. Any other questions from the board or comments?
I just recommend they make sure they properly space them so they don't, you know, get bunched up like the others have. And then they also, the arborist recommended we do something with that chestnut, like prune it and take care of it, so it should be part of what we aim to do.
Tom?
Steve, I think you already basically answered. I was going to ask if, if the procedure had been reversed and they had asked permission to put this tree in this location, would it in the ordinary course be granted? And it sounds like this would fit in the description of the kind of tree that you would ordinarily recommend for that kind of site. So with that in mind, I would support your recommendation.
Okay, we have a couple of comments from our audience. Kevin Erickson? Hi, Kevin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, we can.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Kevin Erickson, here representing the owners of 6 Hildreth. And I did speak to my client, I was made aware of the planting of the red maple. I did speak to my client, I think, you know, in his effort to meet what his understanding was with Mr. Cronin saying, you know, he had, he had had a conversation with Mr. Cronin that he would work with them to replace one of the trees, although it wasn't necessarily a requirement of the statute. He did get a little overzealous, we acknowledge, we didn't have a permit to put it there. But his intentions were good. He had seen a red maple, I think, located directly across the street, thought it fit in with the roadway, and so that was the impetus behind placing it there, though, you know, we do acknowledge we did not obtain a permit from this board as would have been the proper procedure.
Okay, thank you. And Bob Jeffries?
Yeah, I have a suggestion. You know, I think that the tree warden's recommendation on zelkova makes a lot of sense, but there's already a tree on the northeast corner of that property that was illegally cut down by persons unknown, and it's still there. So I suggest you accept the one that he's already planted in the right of way and then put in two zelkova's spaced appropriately to replace the dead tree in the northeast corner and then wherever the other spacing is, which I think would probably be on the other side of the driveway.
Okay, so I'm not sure, you know what, I'm not sure that we're, we're prepared to, to recommend the planting of the two zelkova's, not having had that before us. So you know what, I'm going to leave, Steve, I'm going to leave that for you for further consideration. But with respect to the red maple, I, my sense is that as a board, we're, you know, we're okay with that, but with the caveat that while we appreciate the zealousness of the homeowner, perhaps, not perhaps, but next time, you know, please get the required permits and please come to us first. Scott?
Just a motion to, or a thought for Steve that, you know, zelkova's may be fine, but, you know, for a turn earlier point, this is a scenic roadway, and I think if you find a natural, you know, England species to put there that would thrive, I prefer that over something that's sort of perhaps more ornamental.
Like I said, I think we'll leave that issue for Steve and if Mr. Jeffries and anybody else wants to weigh in in terms of those additional trees. But so, but for tonight, I think we've dealt with the two issues that were before us tonight. So thank you all very much, and, you know, we'll move forward. Okay, thanks, Steve. Okay, we're at our 7:20 PM item, which is a public hearing concerning the classification of real and personal property tax. And so I need a motion to open this public, oh, actually, before I do that, I need a motion to close the public hearing with respect to the trees. So can I have a motion to close that public hearing?
So moved.
In a second? All those in favor, Tom?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, now I need a motion to open the public hearing with respect to the classification of real and personal property taxes.
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you, all those in favor, John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, Bill? Bill, what, Will?
Yes.
Will. I'm sorry. Anyway, this is your first time presenting to us. This is a hearing that we hold every year in the fall, but it's your first time, so welcome, and the floor is yours.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. And I need a little bit of help from Eric here, I'm looking for the presentation.
Okay.
Are you not seeing it on the screen, Will?
I don't see it.
We don't see it either.
In the meantime, I'd just like to thank my board members, Titus Palmer, Diane Holmes, and David Flanagan are the Board of Assessors. Okay, I still unfortunately don't see it, there we go. Great, thank you, Eric. My name is Will Naser, I'm the principal assessor for the town, and pleased tonight to present the tax classification information for your tax burden choices for fiscal 2022. So fiscal 22 is an interim year. Theoretically, we're valuing everything on January 1st, 2021. So in that case, we're looking back in time, we're looking at calendar year 2020 for residential sales, and we're looking back at the information we've gained from commercial industrial values, such as income and expense returns, and then the personal property information is also from the, what's called forms of lists that come in. So this is all based on calendar year 2020 information. Next slide, if you could, please. This information is just a kind of an overall view of the townwide change in value displaying fiscal year 2021, overall values versus 2022. I'd like to point out the right side of the screen, the two last columns there, your overall change. So you have your valuation change of over 350 million and your percentage change of 7.8% in the residential class. That's a lion's share change. And then all the way at the bottom, second to last box, lower right, overall value change of 6.8%, again, from fiscal 21 to 22. Next slide, if you could? Thank you. So this, I just trailed down a little bit more on the changes. So again, Westford dominant residential community, the lion's share, the parcels are single-family homes and residential condominiums. So that's where the lion's share, the biggest increase is, and very minimal decreases and increases in the commercial, three commercial, in the industrial class, in the personal property class. So the big change was certainly the residential class. Next, please. Some trends and comments I've noted. There's a significant increase in the single-family value this year. I think most people know that residential, single-family homes in eastern Massachusetts, Massachusetts, New England, almost anywhere, we're seeing significant value increases. So that's where most of your value is coming from. Condominiums, we did have one or two new complexes, and the apartment complexes are complete. Those would be the Westford Hills location and the Valley Tech. And the commercial industrial, as I mentioned before, kind of neutral growth there. And the personal property, you have two areas, you have your state-valued information and your locally valued. The state value is the complex conduits, wires and poles, and that's generally your Verizon and Tennessee Pipeline. And then the other, the bulk of the value is from your mom-and-poms and the local businesses. Next, please, Eric. Thank you. This is a 10-year look at the taxable value summary. So it's just kind of interesting to look at what's occurred over the past nine years and then the current year. And just to note, interim year versus certification year. A certification year is kind of an audit for the assessing department, and an interim year, you're doing less reporting to the state. So that's the difference between the interim and certification. And again, significant change from last year. I'm a little surprised, I started here in May of 2021, so I didn't dig into the fiscal year 21 information, but I was a little surprised that value change wasn't higher here. But nevertheless, we're at the 6.78% of overall change. Next, please. Thank you. Tax levy, new growth. So new growth is generally the new construction that occurs in the community or items not previously assessed. So we add this, we come up with a value amount, we multiply it by the previous year's tax rate and come up with a tax levy growth amount. And this year, it's 870,884, and that's part of our levy calculation, along with our proposition two and a half calculation. Next, please. And again, just a snapshot of current year and four previous years. Probably what's noteworthy on this particular slide is fiscal year 21 and 20, you see over the, they're both over a million in tax-ledged growth, and my take on that is the apartment complexes that were, that were put up. So that's where the previous assessor gained a lot of new growth. And our value, our tax levy growth, again, that a little over, almost 871 for fiscal 22. Next, please. So we, I go through the process of converting value to tax, so this is the tax rate process. So the overall is, we work throughout the year to refine and come up with the values, we receive approvals from the state. I work with the finance group, and we, we complete the recap documents, we hold the hearing tonight, and then your choices will be submitted for tax rate approval, hopefully tomorrow. Next, please. So step one in the process is establishing and getting approved values. So our 5.4 billion is our value for the community. And I just put down the exempt, just, it's kind of interesting to see how much exempt property a community has as well. And step two is to look at the single tax rate. So it's, it's a math equation, it's a tax levy amount, the 88 million divided by the taxable value. So that's a fraction of .01612, or $16.12 per thousand in value. I also added the average single-family value on this slide and the real estate tax bill amount of $9,678. Next, if you could, thank you. And again, a 10-year look at this, so nine previous years, and the yellow is the current year, based on the unapproved tax rate of $16.12. So it's just kind of interesting to look at what's happened from year to year. And based on last year, this year, a dollar amount change on the, on the average single-family home of only $100, I think is noteworthy. average single-family home of only $100, I think is noteworthy and only a 2.8% change in the tax bill. Okay, next, please. So the next process that I go through is to determine a split tax rate. So it gets into this thing called a residential factor, where anything less than one reduces the share on the residential and puts it on the commercial, industrial, personal side of things. And then the second bullet point, there's certain guidelines that that we have that you can only shift so much. So I just wanted to put that information in there. Next, if you could. So last year fiscal 21, the shares were 87.79 and the CIP, Commercial, Industrial, Personal, at 12.2. The tax rate was $16.64. So that was a single rate that was chosen. And next, please. Residential factor. You can see the residential, commercial, industrial, and personal all at 1612. That's a single rate. And then below in increments of 10%, 10, 20, 30, 40, and 50, the maximum allowable shift would be the 1.5. And then the display of the various tax rates, again, moving from, from left to right. Next, if you could. So this is the the determine, you have a choice. The hearing requires just a single choice to make a, a choice for the single tax rate or a split tax rate. There are other community options. It appears in the past that they've been looked at, and so I didn't enhance any of those options. But I did put a brief line about what they are. So you have the choice of a single rate or a split rate. Next, if you could. So the hearing protocol, the, the choices are before you. You would make your selection. And then there's a confirmation or the town clerk confirms the meeting and voting, and then we submit the state for approval. And that is it. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Will. Much appreciated. So questions from the board? No? Okay. Oh, I was gonna say, wait a minute. Tom and then John.
So we, you're right, Will, and welcome. We did a study three years ago, I guess, and decided we want to stay with the single tax rate, but obviously things change. Does, does your committee have a recommendation or is your role in this just presenting the numbers and?
Yeah, it's just, it's just a presentation, so it's I haven't given a direction, been given a direction by the Board of Assessors. It is the mayor or select board's decision for the tax burden for the community.
Got it. Thanks.
John?
Refresh my memory. Have we given a small commercial exemption in the past or a residential exemption?
Yes. That's, yes, you have.
And what did that change as far as the tax rates concerned? You know?
The last time you had the small commercial exemption was fiscal year 2018. And the, the rates were $16.18 for residential and the commercial, industrial, personal, excuse me, the commercial, industrial was $16.38.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? I don't see any. Oh, yes, there, Scott.
No, this is the benefit of John and Tom can correct me from wrong, but the thinking back in FY 2018 was that the small business exemption didn't really apply always to small businesses. It could be, you know, the landlord may own a condo complex full of small businesses, and so landlord gets the benefit of this sort of small business. So we got rid of it because of any budget reason, more case of the fact it wasn't really doing what we thought it was doing.
Right. If I could?
Yes, please.
Yeah, the, those, both of those programs, the residential exemption and the small commercial, I don't have the information right in front of me, but I know there's a minimal number of communities that elect to have those. They're really not fantastic programs, and they're still out there and still offered, and some communities still do choose those options annually, but it's really, I want to say, you know, less than 20 or 30 choose out of 351. So they're not the best programs.
Okay, thanks.
So, um, so Will, first of all, I just wanted to thank you for the presentation. Also, I really appreciated the historical look and, you know, going back, you know, the 10 years and just seeing, you know, where our tax rate has been and, and what the increase or the decrease has been. So, um, so thank you for that. That was really good information to have. You know, I guess, I, I think I and several others say this every year and and I'm thinking of the Economic Development Committee. You know, our, our commercial industrial rate has, you know, basically held steady around, you know, anywhere between 11 and 12%, you know, went down a little bit this year. And we're always trying to look at ways that we can, you know, increase our commercial activity, but doing it in a way that is also consistent with our community character and with our community priorities and needs. So, you know, I just, you know, I, I throw that out there. I know the Economic Development Committee is, is always looking at ways to increase commercial development. You know, we just learned that two buildings, one on Liberty Way and the other on Carlisle? Anyway, the old Puma building and another building have just been leased out. And so that's, I think, really good news for the town as well, that those buildings are going to be filled, hopefully sometime soon. So anyway, I just, you know, I just, I mentioned that again as we do every single year. So, but with that, and I see no, I see, Scott, you have your hand up?
Well, one thing I also mention every year is, as Will pointed out, the residential factor is so high in Westford that, yeah, to materially shift any tax burden from residential to non-res really has a large penalty on the, on the commercial.
Right.
Effectively, you don't really get a lot of benefit to residential homeowners unless you cause a lot of pain to the commercial and on the commercial side, we're competing with Littleton and Chelmsford. We can't, we can't make our local employers not competitive with neighboring towns and still hope to have a vibrant, you know, Route 110 corridor.
Yeah. Okay, with that, is there a motion from the board? Tom?
Open suggestion, Will, that my motion would be to accept a single tax rate for the upcoming fiscal 2022 year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now, all those in favor? Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, Will, thank you very much. I think you can take our vote and submit it to the state tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much.
Have a good evening. Okay, we are at our 7:35 PM item, which is a public hearing. It's a petition for a joint or identical poll location. We opened this public hearing at our last meeting and continued it till, till tonight. Jody?
You need to close the public hearing on the tax classification.
Oh, yes, thank you very much. Is there a motion to close the public hearing on the tax classification?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, thanks. Now, moving along to our public, our petition for a joint or identical poll locations. And we opened this public hearing at our last meeting, so this is a continuation of that public hearing. And Paulo Sattler, I guess, is here from National Grid?
Yes, my, my name is Paulo Sattler. I'm an engineer for National Grid. I'm here for the poll hearings.
Okay. So, um, can you, this first hearing, we're just, we're talking about the poll, poll 37 on Oak Hill Road. So can you just tell us what, what the movement of that poll entails?
Yes, there's going to be an installation of a new bike path, bike lane on Oak Hill Road. And the town requested us, National Grid, to relocate poll 37 across the street to make way for this new bike path. And so we're complying and we're moving the pole across the street. And it's located in an area that it doesn't impede a driveway, doesn't impede a view. It's within a forested area. So to give you a better idea of where the installation is, but that's the reason we're relocating it. And then also we will be removing that pole from that existing location. So there'll be nothing left pole lies there. So is anybody, if anybody has any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Okay. Jody, I see you have your hand up?
Yes, I just want to clarify that it is not a bike path. It is a sidewalk on both this and the next hearing. So I don't want the public to get concerned. So thank you.
Okay. I, I do have a question for you, Paulo. Assuming that the board approves this and the, the next poll, when do you anticipate doing this work? And how long is it going to take?
Usually for, for this specific poll, it takes about three days. And if approved tonight, our construct, our construction schedule is about 10 weeks away, depending on storms. And that might delay it further. So to give you an idea, about 10 weeks away.
So early winter or maybe spring? I mean, besides electric wires out there, do you have to coordinate with Comcast and cable and get them to move their wires?
Correct. We are first on the scene and then everybody else follows us within about a month's time.
Okay, and so you can't take down the old pole until everybody moves their wires, right?
Correct.
Okay. So in our probability, this is not going to be completed until the spring, based on our past experience with this.
And yeah, I would say that's very likely.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve the the relocation of the, of poll 37 on Oak Hill Road to the other side of the road as shown on the plan we've seen tonight?
So moved.
In a second? All those in favor, John?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. And I need a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, John?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Now we're at our 7:40 PM public hearing, which is a continued public hearing for a petition for a joint or identical poll location, and this is to relocate poll 16 on Oak Hill Road. And Paulo, I am assuming that the reason for the relocation is the same as what you just told us.
Yes, that's correct. They're also rebuilding that intersection. They were moving, they're adjusting the island in the middle of it. So we are taking the pole completely away from there. And then, you know, they could build anything they want and the pole wouldn't be in the way. So I think that's a great adjustment.
Yes, a pole in the middle of an island in the middle of the intersection is not such a good idea. All right. Any questions or comments? Anita?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, kind of to follow up on what Jody's comment was, that it's not a bike lane. I just wanted to make sure that we have, like, if you don't mind, updated diagrams or charts or something, so that is something that's circulated. It's clear for everyone that it's not a bike lane or that it sidewalks, whatnot.
Okay. All right. So is there a motion to approve the relocation of poll 16 on Oak Hill Road as shown on the diagram before us tonight?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And all those in favor? Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You likewise.
Yes, I'm getting there. That's next. I was thanking him and then I was going to ask him. Okay. Thanks, Scott. Second?
Second.
All those? John?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. We are at our 7:45 PM item, which is a request for a change of manager on a general law, chapter 138, section 15, convenience store wine and malt beverage license for rapid refill at 498 Groton Road. Patty, is it Patty? Are you out there? Yes, you are. Hi, Patty.
Hi, how are you?
Good. So is, is everything in order?
Everything is in order.
Okay.
It's a simple change of manager, so it isn't too intense.
All right. Any questions or comments from the board? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor, John?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Moving right along to our 7:50 PM item, which is the consent agenda. We have a request to approve the following. A banner for the handmade holiday bazaar. The applicant is the Friends of the Cameron Senior Center. The date, Friday, November 26th through Monday, December 6th, in front of the First Parish Church. Second, the, an event for the Sun Santa Charity Fundraiser. The applicant is Kevin Coughlin. The date, September, I'm sorry, Saturday, December 4th through Tuesday, December 14th in front of the Abbott School. And then third is a banner for the Christmas tree collection. The applicant is Jeff Dufanet on behalf of the Westford Firefighters Association. The dates are Wednesday, January 1, 2022, through Saturday, January 11, 2020. It's our Thursday, November 25th, 2021, through Friday, December 31, 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second? All those in favor? Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. 7:55 PM item, disposition of the 63, of 63 Main Street. I believe that we are in a joint meeting with the Historical Commission to consider approval of the final Massachusetts Historical Preservation restriction. Are they with us tonight? I see some members. There's David. Okay. Okay. David, does the Historical Commission have any, and there's Rob Stafford, does, does the historical, has this, has the Historical Commission taken a position and do they have any objection to the preservation restriction that is being considered tonight for 63 Main Street?
No, we are in full support of it.
Okay. Any other comments that, that you or your, you or on behalf of yourself or the commission wants to make?
There was some concern, I think Ellen brought up to me yesterday. Ellen Hardy had mentioned something about paint being put in there, and I looked through. had mentioned something about paint being put in there. And I looked through the document. I didn't see, I saw some definitions for minor and major repairs, to clarify, but I wanted to assure her and the new owner that there was no restriction on paint color or anything like that.
Jody, did you have your hand up? But you took it down.
Yes, I just wanted to be sure we had a quorum of historical, and then I saw Brian Alcorn.
Thank you. Okay, great. All right. So with that, hi, Brian. Any comments or questions from the Select Board?
No.
All right, seeing none. I would like to thank Jody and staff for all their hard work in bringing this to a conclusion. And I'd also like to welcome the new owners of 63 Main Street to town. And I think we all look forward to watching the rehab and what happens with 63 Main Street. It's certainly an iconic home here in Westford. So thank you to everybody. Jody?
Yeah, I just wanted to also thank the Historic Commission because they've been really helpful in this process. And so I thank you to them, too.
Thank you. We really appreciate it. Appreciate being able to really save this gem of a home here in Westford. So with that, is there a motion to approve the final deed to transfer the property to Diane and Charles Grandine?
So moved.
Jody? Okay, and before we take a vote, Jody has her hand up again. So what have we not done right?
I'm sorry, you're in a joint meeting with the Historic Commission. You need to vote both boards to approve the final Mass Historic Preservation restriction. Then the Select Board can approve the transfer of the deed to the Grandines.
Okay. So, David, why don't we do this, David? Have the Historic Commission vote first to approve the restriction, and then the Select Board will vote to approve the restriction, and then we'll vote to transfer the deed?
Sure. So maybe you could call out each of the members. My vote is to support it?
I think first you need a motion from one of your members to support.
Okay, so I guess, is there a motion to take a vote on supporting the preservation restriction?
Okay, Robert Stafford has made the motion, and I think-
So is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So all in favor of supporting the preservation restriction as written? Aye, all in favor? Yep. So I think that's unanimous?
It is. All right. Now, Select Board, is there a motion to approve the Historic Preservation Restriction?
The move.
In a second. Okay, and all those in favor, John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, now, now is there a motion to approve the final deed to transfer the property to Diane and Charles Grandine?
The move.
Second. Okay, and all those in favor, Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Hi. And Jody, thank you for keeping us on the straight and narrow.
Cameras blew it.
Scott?
It's a question for Jody. Do we have to sign anything now, or is this all taken care of?
That's why I have my hand up. So I need all of, or at least three Select Board, and I do need three Historic Commission, these three, to come into the Town Hall tomorrow, if possible, to sign both the preservation restriction and the deed. We are happy to drive it to your home if you need us to do that. You just need to let us know. But we do need to get that signed, and then I will fed exit to the Mass Historic Preservation Office tomorrow, and they will sign it, and then the Grandines can finally close on this property, hopefully by the end of this week.
Great. John?
Yeah, I noticed on the documents that there's some signatures specifically for you and for Tom and for Scott to sign for the Select Board. And then there's the deed, I think, itself that all of us have to sign. But there are pre-designated signatures in the documents that I read.
Aren't yours and Anita's name aren't on it? If not, then they'll fix that before tomorrow morning, okay?
Yeah, I'm happy to look at it. I do need three signatures. I don't believe it matters who, but we did try to put your titles and so on. But as long as three of you can stop by, we can send this off.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Okay, moving on to old and new business. First, is to consider implementing a new requirement for General Law, Chapter 138, Section 15, all alcohol package store license and wine and malt package store license applicants to complete, basically to complete training in order to obtain local license approval. And this is actually, I mean, this is, if you recall, this was based upon our last meeting where we discussed this. And we formed a small task force with Lieutenant Pellequin, Jody, and Scott to take a look at what requirements would be. So if, I don't know who, but if one of you wants to report on what your recommendation is, that would be appreciated. Okay, don't all jump at once. Okay, somebody got to-
Okay, I'm also, yeah, so I mean, first, you know, this was a thought I had a few months ago after one of our hearings for a local establishment that had not done the right thing. And I asked, they have a question of the Police Department, should we require ID check devices at every seller of alcohol? And, you know, to their credit, they didn't just say, no, we don't need that. It's a bad plan. They came back with what was even a better plan, which was, here's what we think is a good idea, which was to have training of the owners and workers at these establishments. So we met, I think, a week ago or so now, and Lieutenant Pellequin and Town Clerk's Office that does some really good work, looking at what's available for programs. We also consider the board's opinion that we not go too far afield in terms of requiring too many restrictions on owners. So there were, as you may recall, three eligible training options. And one of the, two of them were being offered on a regular basis, like every month, and one of them was about every six months. So we decided to require that every, every employee be certified with the tips training, which is, you know, good basic training. And the owners take, you know, two of the three options, the tips, the bat, and I forget the third one, Lieutenant. But so we just required two out of the three for owners, and they could pick whichever work with their schedule. We require this to be done by January 1 for current owners and employees, which we think has enough time to get it done, given these things are offered at a pretty high frequency, at least for two out of the three. And then, while not really part of our purview directly, we also discuss the fact that we've got alcohol being sold through restaurants, and it's a different kind of risk. It's not so much underage, perhaps, as it is serving, over-serving, those who maybe shouldn't be getting that last drink. And so we're going to also require similar training for those establishments, also for January 1. And then going forward with it, I believe, three months of a new hire, if I'm remembering that correctly.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board? Lieutenant Pellequin, do you need to add, do you want to add anything to that?
Yes, thank you, Andrea. Yeah, first, it was a pleasure working with everyone. You know, it was great to have everyone's perspective into this document and, you know, basically merging all of our thoughts and information. So that was great. Thank you for everyone on that. And I just wanted to add, I think I mentioned it last time, concurrently with this proposed document, with the three alcohol violations that we had at the various liquor stores, we put together, also working with the Town Clerk's Office, some information that we wanted to reach out in person. So we actually visited all 12 convenience stores slash package stores within the last couple of weeks. I just got that report recently and just submitted it to the Town Clerk's Office, as we had discussed. Basically, putting a lot of the stuff that we presented to these businesses as part of the renewal information that will be sent. So it's reinforced every year. So we had a nice little wide range of education from laws and signs and stuff, unique to our perspective as we kind of see it with these violations.
Great. Thank you. And I think, you know, outreach to all of the affected parties is important to make sure that they all are aware of the new regulation, the new towns' regulations and requirements, so that they're, you know, not surprised, and so that they're given sufficient time and warning to come into compliance. Tom?
Just gratitude for those who worked on this. This is a very thoughtful document and a very good way to present it. So I'm glad we took the time, and thanks for putting the effort in.
Anita?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everyone who I know could get pretty tedious thinking through language for policy. I guess I have two questions. One is, how, if, how the general feedback was with your outreach from those license holders and just general, any surprises that you guys had or that they had?
No, not really. Most were receptive. You know, I think we explained that, you know, we had some actual violations. And I think, once they hear that, sort of the guard comes down right away. And then, you know, they're very receptive to that. And then we were able to kind of let them know that, you know, this document and what we were working on would be coming down as well. So all in all, they were very thankful for the visits and receptive to reinforce.
And I guess my other question is, what if, what if somebody is not in compliance with this policy? What happens then?
Well, if they're in violation of any of the liquor law violations, then certainly we would take action on that part, you know, from the police department perspective.
If we approve this tonight, then it becomes part of the license process for the establishments. If they don't, you know, provide the training to their employees, then the Town Clerk can decide, or we could decide to not approve their license renewal through the Town Clerk's Office.
Yeah, but I wonder, and Anita, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, that's, that happens at the time of the license renewal, which is once a year. I think the question might be, what if, if, you know, the establishment is hiring employees, but they're not going through the training?
Right. And like, we can't track that, right? We're not going to track who the new employees are.
Right.
Jody has her hand up.
Yes, I see that. Jody?
I think we, if, once you vote this policy, we can examine the procedures that we need to put in place to make sure that they are complying. And if they're not, then we will bring it back to the board, and you can decide whether you want to suspend their license or what action you want to take. So once you vote this, then we will put something into practice so that we can track it.
Thank you. Okay, Scott?
I just wanted to call, so I know Lieutenant Pellequin on the Police Department was really helpful in getting this thing done, but also want to call out Andy Sherman and the Town Clerk's Office as also being part of this. It was great to walk into that meeting with Lieutenant and the Town Clerk and Andy and just have it there. Within about an hour, we had it all ironed out, and really, really great work on the part of all of them.
Great. Thank you to everybody. Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
And all those in favor, Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Hi. And thank you again to all of you who have, who worked on this and came up with this policy. As Tom said, it really is a very well thought out and reasonable one, that hopefully will meet the goals that we set. So thanks, everybody. Have a good night, Lieutenant. All right. Our next item is a request to authorize a proposed conservation restriction with the Westford Conservation Trust on the property located at 1 Leland Road, and approve any proposed revisions made by the Department of Energy and Environmental Affairs. So just for anybody who doesn't know this, where this property is, it's located at the intersection of Main Street and Leland. It's on the right-hand side as you start to come down Leland. It's about a little over six acres of land. It has a lovely house and a couple of barn structures on it. The house and land has been in the Pellequin family for generations. It is their pride and joy. I had the pleasure of talking and speaking with Mr. Pellequin when he was moving forward with putting the restriction on his land. And his love for his land, for the property, for this town, for preserving the open spaces is just palpable when you talk to him. And he's excited to finally have this done and to preserve the property for generations in the future for the town. So on behalf of the board, I just want to thank the Pellequin family so much for their donation and for putting a restriction on this property. It really is a special place as you come down the hill out of the center of town. So with that, any other comments or questions? And Ellen Hardy, I see, has her hand up, and I know she was waiting to say something about this. So Ellen?
I'm muted.
Yep, we can hear you.
Thank you. As a member of the board of the Westford Land Preservation Foundation, and one of the goals of the board 20 years ago when our foundation was founded, was to get residents to do exactly what Bernard and Judith Pellequins are doing. And it's so exciting. This is one of the first properties I can think of, where the landowner actually came to the conservation groups in the town and said, this is something I want to do. Tell me how you can help me do it. They spoke to our board before they worked with the trust, who will be holding the restriction. So this is a plug to other landowners to let them know that it can be done, that if you own a piece of land that you love as much as the Pellequins have cared for 1 Leland Road, there is a mechanism to have that land stay forever open. And it is this kind of a deed restriction for a conservation restriction. So both our board, the Westford Land Preservation Trust, and the Westford, the foundation and the trust are both available. And we hope this starts a snowball rolling in town of other restrictions and preservation of open space. It's an exciting moment for Westford. Between this and 63 Main Street, it's been a good night. Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen. Okay, with that, is there a motion to approve the conservation restriction?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor, Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. And once again, thank you so much to the Pellequins. Okay, we have a request from the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee to appoint Joan Kudo as a full member for a term expiring on June 30, 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
The move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, Tom?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. And we have a request from the town clerk to appoint election officers for terms to expire July 31, 2022. Is there a motion to approve? I'm sorry, is there a motion to appoint the election officers as shown on the list submitted tonight by our town clerk?
So moved.
And a second? All those in favor? John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Okay. Next up, consider approval of the 2021-2022 Select Board Town Manager Goals. As you all recall, we talked about this at our last meeting. Several of us had some edits and comments. And so if you could, Eric, can you bring it up on the screen? Thank you. So I, anybody have any comments? Okay, I actually, I do have one and a suggestion. With respect to the addition of promote and strengthen community policing efforts and community engagement activities, virtual and person, I don't have an issue with the goal itself, but I'd like to propose for the board's consideration just a suggestion in terms of the wording of that. And it comes from, based on the presentation that we had from Chief Chambers about a month ago, in which he outlined for us some of the goals that he's working on in his police, with his police department and with his personnel. And he certainly, in that presentation, indicated that community policing and engagement was part of his overall planning and part of his goals. So I thought that we might change the wording a bit to say, support and promote the police chief's goals of enhancing community policing efforts and community engagement activities so as to, just a little bit, it gives it a little bit more, this is a joint effort and a commitment by the town manager and the select board to work with the police chief to, as I said, to support and promote this goal. So that would be my suggestion for the board to consider. Tom?
Andrea, I wonder if we could, so I like that. I wonder if we could say the town and the police chief's goals? Just because I can think of one goal in particular that he didn't articulate that I'd really like to see involved there, which is sort of some kind of structured outreach to communities of color in town. I think he'd mentioned, I know that's something that is on his mind. It wasn't something to present as a goal. So if we did both, I think we'd cover it.
Okay, I'm fine with adding, you know, to promote the town and the police chief's goals. That's, I'm good with that. Other comments? Not about this or about any of the other changes that were made? Anita?
I just wanted to call out a comment or a question that I had in the comment section about interface. And I know I've asked about this before, but I don't remember the answer.
Jody, can you answer that?
I'm sorry, what does the comment say? I can't see.
Anita asked if the schools are paying for interface.
Yeah, so the schools put that into their funds from the federal stimulus or federal COVID relief. I don't know if that decision's been made, but we have a backup in our ARPA funds if it isn't. So it should be covered in one or the other.
Okay, Anita?
Yep, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from anybody? John, do you have a comment or a question? Or you're just waiting?
No, I'm just having so much fun. No.
All right, just making sure. All right, with that, and with the amendments or modifications with the edits shown tonight, is there a motion to approve the town manager goals for fiscal year 2022? So moved.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor? Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi. Jody, once again, we've given you a hefty list of goals, but we know you're up to the task. All right. And then last, under old and new business is the annual town manager performance review. So the board did meet an executive session earlier this evening to discuss the town manager's performance and her review. You know, I will, each one of you can have an opportunity to say something, but I will just say, you know, we all thought 2020 was a difficult year with the pandemic starting. 2021 has proven to be just as, if not more challenging, as the pandemic continues to run its course. Jody has led this town with, you know, with energy, with compassion, with incredible leadership, flexibility responding to everything that's been thrown at her, finding funds, keeping town staff motivated, keeping all of us healthy. And I don't think anybody can doubt the commitment and the dedication that she has and that she has shown to this town and to its residents. I would say that she wakes up every morning thinking about all of us and goes to sleep at night thinking about all of us. So it's been an incredible year. I am hopeful that things will be a little calmer for 2022, but who knows? But again, you know, nothing but praise and appreciation for all you do for us, Jody, and for all of the work you do, not only for us as a board, but for the town, for your employees, for the staff, for the residents. A very deep and heartfelt thank you. Tom?
To echo all that, and I think one of the marks of a great leader is to build a great team. And it's been a lot. The past couple of years, the team's really been built and restructured. And I think it's just in a great place. So kudos for everything. But just as I was filling out the forms, I was thinking, wow, what a big transformation we've had and what a great, what a great feeling I think we all have about the team in place.
Scott?
I just echo that, both of your sentiments. And you're thinking about the number of retirements we've had, retirements in, you know, key positions. And they've been not replaced, but, you know, filled with people of equal quality. It's great to see the town staff so well-led, managed, and fact incentivized by their own, by their own personal work ethic. But also, every year, I think, as we approach the budget, once again, I think, well, what else can we, what else can Jody do? You know, we keep on finding ways to deliver more value to the taxpayer at less, well, not less cost, but at a reduced budgetary level. I mean, so you think about all efficiencies over the years, formation of a DPW, you know, last year. And this year, it's the assurance or the self-assurance that we're looking at. So I was impressed that I've been around for eight years and every, in this role and for every one of those years, Jody's found some new way to improve our spendable funds for the residents. And it's pretty remarkable that she keeps on doing it.
Okay, Anita?
You know, I just want to mention a little bit about how I don't think people generally in the community realize, like, how much Jody does behind the scenes, how much she truly cares about people and how she is very hands-on. So she's out there driving to Hildreth to take pictures of those trees or driving down Boston Road to see what speeding is like, right? She's honestly, like, just out there in the community to understand what are the community, what are the community members really seeing? And I don't think people realize that or recognize that and realize how much of her time is really spent one-on-one with residents to kind of troubleshoot a problem or understand what their issues are to help figure that out. And so I just wanted to really applaud Jody because you do all of that while managing our town, like the services, the programs, our leadership team, all of these different departments that you're managing up here and leadership-wise, but then you're going down to the individual level of keeping it just personal, right? Or like baking bread for people who might be needing some bread. You're just very kind. And I think people don't always see that and people don't recognize that. So I just wanted to call that out tonight.
And last but not least, John?
No, I think Jody's done a remarkable little job for a long time, especially on things like the budget. And see, the town meetings that she held on the gridiron out there were just remarkably smooth, well-done. So I think she's done a remarkable job under some very trying circumstances. So great job, Jody.
So to show our appreciation, no, Jody, you don't get to talk yet. I'm sorry, put your hand down. To show our appreciation, the board discussed, obviously, doing that by raising and increasing your compensation. And so it is the board's recommendation that we give you a 2% merit raise. And in addition to that, because we have done a survey of the market basket of other town managers and have determined that you are below market basket, we also want to increase your salary by $2,000 on top of the 2% raise to reflect that market basket adjustment. And while we know that doesn't bring you quite up to the average of the market basket, we're working on it. We just can't get there all at once. So with that, is there a motion to approve Jody, a raise in Jody's compensation as I just outlined?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? What, have we not done this right?
Is it retro to July 1, 2021?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Retro to July 1, 2021. Okay. Okay. So all those in favor? Tom?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. All right. Now, do you want to say something?
Yes, well, thank you again for all your kind words. And really, it gets me choked up to hear that. It's much, much appreciated. And I couldn't do what I do without your leadership and your support. And really, you all are unbelievable. So thank you so, so much for that. And then the staff, I have to say, we have the best, most fantastic department heads ever. They're all highly motivated. We love a challenge. And so everything that we do to innovate is because we just are, you know, thrilled to come up with new ideas and implement them. So that motivates us. And the fact that you all get excited about it is just icing on the cake. And in terms of, you know, some of the comments about helping the public, I love that part of my job and I wish I could just do that every day, but I can't. But I love going to Hildreth and looking at trees and driving 30 miles per hour down Boston Road and, you know, looking at trails and issues on trails, which I was doing today. So it's all, that all is just the most, the best part of my job when I get to do it. But, so thank you all. Thank you to the department heads. This is a great town. I couldn't love this town any more than I do. So, and thank you for recognizing my achievements.
And thank you. All right. We're at our 8:35 PM board reports and updates. Anybody have any board reports or updates? Okay, don't see any. Jody, town manager's report.
Okay, thank you very much. So where am I? So our first is a request for you to sign the initial compliance certification for the schematic design study at the Lloyd G. Blanchard Middle School for the roof replacement. And then, I don't know if you want me to keep going or you want to do these one at a time?
I guess maybe we should do this and the next one, one at a time, and then we can go to the rest, okay? So is there a motion to approve?
They're moved.
Second? All those in favor? Tom?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. Jody, do we need to sign something here? Because it does say request, it does say, you know, to sign. So do we all have to come sign again?
Well, you'll be there tomorrow to sign our other documents and we have this ready for you too.
Okay.
Thank you. Trying to lower my hand here, but I can't find that button. Hold on one second. Okay, there we go. So then the next is a request from the Council on Aging to accept a donation from David Davis to support programs. And he bequeathed to us his 401K. So we're asking you to accept the gift of $7,683.20 for senior programs.
Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
I can, really, I think profound gratitude for that kind of a move.
Absolutely. John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi. And as Scott said, with great thanks to Mr. Davis for his incredibly generous donation and quest to the town and to the senior center. Okay.
So then on grants, we have a Department of Conservation and Recreation 2021 Male Mass Trails Grant for the O'Brien Farm Public Footbridge in the amount of $27,970.50. This does allow us to give back funds to CPC, who had granted us funds. The Executive Office of Public Safety and Security 911 Grant for fiscal year '22, which helps offset our 911 public safety dispatchers in the amount of $83,046. Again, another grant from the same office for the same purpose in $22,114.42. And then a municipal road safety grant in the amount of $20,750. And contracts tie-in bond for professional engineering services for the replacement of the Pond Brook and Blue Brook culverts in the amount of $249,800. Scott's Tree and Landscape for sidewalk snow removal, the amount of $36,500. And purchase orders with Colonial Municipal Group for two Ford F-150 hybrid trucks in the amount of $80,931.90 for the DPW.
And if it's on hybrid, for anyone from the Sustainability and Energy Committee listening?
Sanofi Passor for flu vaccines in the amount of $59,313.31 for the Health Department. Presidio for additional cube licenses for the Tech Department in $19,739.50. And ARC electrostatic painting for rehab and electrostatic painting for the Highway Vehicle 11 in the amount of $10,150.
Any questions, comments? Is there a motion to approve? Second? And all those in favor? Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Tom? Hi. All right. There a motion to waive reading of correspondence?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Can just raise our hands. Okay. And is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And all those in favor? Okay. Thank you all very much. Everybody have a good night. Everybody in Westford, stay safe and be well.
Night, everyone.